Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Haverford Township, February 13th, 2020. March, could you please call roll?
Mr. Capuzzi?
Present.
The Reardon? Mr. Pointon?
Here.
Channa?
Present.
Ms. Dobbs?
Here.
Mr. Fierghamondo?
Present.
Garrett?
Here.
Thank you. I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Alleg-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a new victim for the Planning Commission meeting, for the Planning Commission. Jack Garrett, welcome to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Jack, the background in project management, construction management, and I'm sure he'll have a lot to say to help us as we review our various plans. And I'd also like to publicly thank Chris Bowman. Chris retired from the Planning Commission in December. He served for the board for at least 10 years. He was instrumental in the development of our design standards for the Eagle Rock Carter. And he also served on the Planning Committee for the new township building here. And he currently serves on the Steering Committee for the updates to the Township's comprehensive plan. Chris, we all thank you and wish you the best of luck with everything.
Here.
Okay. What I'd like to do, since I don't know if this school is ready to present their plans or not, we can just move on to review of minutes, get that out of the way. And I have minutes from the reorganization meeting and our regular meeting held on January 9th of 2020. Get a motion to approve minutes? Oh, yeah, everybody was here.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the January meeting.
Is there a second?
A second?
I have a comment on them.
A comment?
Yes.
Okay.
I would ask Maggie Dobbs to check on her, the description of her, her title.
I don't currently have a copy of the minutes in front of me. What was the?
It has you down as on the Montgomery County Planning Commission.
I am employed by the Montgomery County Planning Commission. That is correct.
But you're a senior planner?
That is true.
Okay. So I move that the minutes be corrected to reflect that you're a senior planner at the Montgomery County Planning Commission or for?
Okay, so I have a motion and a-
Is that acceptable, Maggie?
Amendment?
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a few cosmetic ones that, can we make cosmetic corrections afterwards?
Sure.
Okay.
March, will you call roll on that, please?
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
The Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Mr. Channa?
Yes.
Mr. Dobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Fierghamondo?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Okay. Each of the board members received a form this evening. It's from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania State Ethics Commission. And for our newer members, this is a form that we fill out each year. I think it has to be completed by the beginning of May, and it covers the prior year. So you'll be filling this form out for the year 2019. And basically ask questions about, just wants to make sure that you don't have any conflicts of interest in regards to serving on the Planning Commission. It's a pretty straightforward form. I don't, I've never had any problems filling it out, and I think it should be pretty easy to do. Okay, so that leaves us with the School District of Haverford Township. And there is presently no one in the audience to present that plan. So what we can do is we can go through the Township Engineers Review Letter. And Chuck, since you are the author of this document, why don't you give us a quick run-through of what you found and what some of the key issues are in your opinion?
Happy to, Mr. Capuzzi.
Thank you.
I'm Chuck Faulkner, I'm with Pinoni. I know I haven't met all of you, there's at least three of you that I haven't met. But we typically, we are the township engineer, we review subdivision land development and, and comment on the plans and provide the Planning Commission any, any input that, and answer the questions that they may have. So, this project is obviously for this Haverford School District. That's a high school, as we all know. It's the addition of two buildings and associated parking in there. And I don't have to tell you all, I imagine you all have been down there, it's tight. Traffic's an issue, parking's an issue, a lot of people, a lot of activities down there. So what we do is we'll look at the plan, we'll go through the ordinance, look at any of the waivers they've requested, determine if we, we agree with them or not agree with them, comment and provide comments to the Planning Commission on the major things that we see on the plan. And let me just run through a couple of, a couple of the comments through here. We divide our letters up into zoning, subdivision of land development, stormwater management, and then some general comments. And typically when there's other larger subdivisions that involve traffic, there's usually a traffic comment on there also. So we just walk through the letter. The, the first, first part of it is waivers requested by the applicant, a list of them there, okay? And then followed by zoning relief.
Chuck, the waivers they're requesting, they looked, they looked okay to me. I didn't see anything in there that was of any substantial problem in granting those waivers.
The only one we have some issues with, Angelo, is the last one, the re-
Right.
Relief from the stormwater runoff from two-year, to the two-to-one-year rate, which this, this property drains down to areas that do have chronic problem and when we get heavy rains. So we would, we'd be hesitant to, for the board to consider that.
Okay.
Just going through, like I said, they're dividing the zoning, listed are the zoning relief that has been provided. And then subdivision comments, there's some administrative comments, some reference to other approvals that are needed. And then seven and eight are, are some more specific comments to, to this land development.
I'm sorry, Chuck, I didn't mean to cut you off. Before we get any further into this, would you like to take a brief recess so the school district can set up and we can go back, go back to it then? Yes?
Yes, that's, that's fine. We'll take a brief recess until-
We'll be presenting the layout, site plan, et cetera. So over the last few years, you know, the district's been looking at all the buildings going on. You know, we were here a little over a year ago presenting Linwood to you all, and that's been under construction now for the past seven or eight months. So at that time, the district was evaluating all their buildings, and one of the needs that was found, especially after doing a demographic study in 2018, was the number of students that are going to be coming to the high school. And that study revealed a little bit over 400 students would be coming. So the district engaged KCBA to look at, take a look at the overall high school and what had to be done. And basically, the existing building could absorb another 124 or so students. So there was that part of it, so that left 276 students that they needed more space for. So KCBA came up with, in early 2019, they were released to start doing schematic design. Then over the summer, we came in front of the zoning board because some variants were, variances were needed for height setback, impervious coverage, et cetera. I believe you were talking about it earlier, it's in Pinoni's letter, the variances that were all approved. So then we're here today. The design was released to move forward back in October by the school board. And that is the plans that we have here to discuss with you all. So that being said, we have some things to present. Ryan will go kind of walk through what, and these are all at a schematic level at this point. You know, none of these decisions are finalized. It's one thing I did want to point out, even some of the site logistics, the exact phasing of the project still needs to be discussed with the district. We have to finalize our budget, let alone their cash flow for the project and over, over the time that it's going to occur. So that being said, I'll let Ryan-
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Do you see additional problems coming up in the next four to five years where you see a need for more than what you've already planned on? Or do you anticipate that, that with the number, with what you're doing at this point, that you will have the adequate space for the, you can't plan everything perfectly, but it doesn't look like you're going to end up with having the right kinds of numbers so that you'll be in good shape for a few years thereafter?
Well, I'll, probably Maureen, Maureen speak to that a little bit. I mean, I can somewhat answer it, but-
Sure. Hi, I'm Maureen Roushi, Superintendent here in the district. The short answer to your question, or direct answer to your question is yes. As we looked at the enrollment projections, it's actually more than 400 students from the time that we did the demographic study, but we've been absorbing those students into the building. So the direction that we gave to CB Development and to KCBA was to plan for those additional students after we had absorbed those in, that would take us beyond the time period that we're looking at.
Thank you.
What is the total number of students now?
1,900 students. I'm sorry, I don't know where the question came from.
Good evening. As Ken mentioned, my name is Ryan Orr from KCBA Architects. I'm the project manager for KCBA for this project. On the screen in front of you is an artistic rendering of the, what we're calling the music wing addition. On the right-hand side is the orchestra room, and on the left-hand side would be a new band room. Currently, these two functions are within the existing building, are a, are not of adequate size for the expansion of the music program that we anticipate with these additional students. And then those two rooms inside the existing building would turn into a chorus room, which also expands from its current function, and an expanded fitness room. And the fitness room allows for additional physical education activities because we weren't, we weren't able to build an additional gym to house these, these fitness classes. But there are alternative physical education classes that can take place in this enlarged fitness room. The rendering before you on the screen now is an artist's rendering of what the three-story classroom wing would be proposed to be. Three stories, roughly 6,800, 67, 27 square feet on each floor. The first floor comprised of four regular-sized classrooms with a lab on the end. That's that white box you see on the end. That is three stacked labs, one on each floor. And then the balance, the second and third floors, each houses two science labs per floor. Part of this is balancing out that curriculum that the additional 400 students throughout the school would require. Also by building labs in the new classroom wing that frees up traditional classroom spaces, we'll say, within the existing building. So you can see from both of these renderings, the, these additions fit within the context of the existing high school. Their, their heights are comparable to the existing surrounding pieces of the academic wing to the left, and then behind you, the cafeteria and science labs above. Additionally, the Pinoni's letter references a, the sewer module, which will need to be granted. So part of that is we're adding six water closets, 17 lavatories, and 15 drinking fountains are the primary pieces of that sewer module that we're in the current works of obtaining. Yes, and, and also a part of that is, in order to absorb those counts within the building, we're swapping out existing fixtures to more water conservation fixtures at a three-to-one ratio because they're about 33% more efficient. With that, we can turn it over to Ron Moncrey from Gilmore and Associates.
Hi, good evening. I'm Ron Moncrey. I'm an engineer PE with Gilmore and Associates. I have 21 years of experience in land development and site design, stormwater management, and related activities. Worked on a number of schools throughout the area over the, over that timeframe, additions as well as new schools. I was, I was the design engineer for the Radnor Middle School not far away. These are the, the site plans that were submitted with the preliminary land development plan. We didn't, I didn't want to bore you to tears with every single plan sheet and profile in here, but we try to capture the essence of, of the plan and as, as they might, as, as these, these sheets are relative to the discussion this evening. So I think everyone's familiar with where the school is in the township. This here is a overall site plan of the property, kind of zoomed-out version, if you will. And the limit of work that we're talking about with, with this project-
Thanks, Ryan. So the, to give you some context, from a plan and metric standpoint, the, the music addition that Ryan was speaking of is this gray rectangular shape here, which is to the, I guess, westerly corner of the existing school building off of Liddlemay Avenue. And the three-story addition he was speaking of is this other rectangle at the northern corner of the school. Part of the plan, in addition to the school additions, the actual physical school building additions, was to not only mitigate the, the ordinance required stormwater management generated from the runoff and as conditioned with the zoning relief granted for the green roofs, the vegetated roofs, which are built into the design, but also offset existing upstream drainage that comes down and is intercepted by the existing storm sewer infrastructure in and around the school itself. So what we have done here is we've managed to integrate, in concert with your, with your engineer from Pinoni Associates, integrate some upgrades to the existing basin, which is behind the classroom addition here. We call it 1-1 on the plan. And design and install, as part of the improvements, the, the new underground basin, we call 1-2, the larger one here. And I should, I should also back up a second. As part of the improvements, we are also expanding the parking lot, and that, that's consistent with the arrangement with the zoning relief as well. So underneath the new parking lot expansion, which is currently grass, if you, if you look at this, this is the rendering, the color, site rendering of existing conditions. So you can see the limits of the existing parking lot, thanks, Ryan, here. So what we're doing is essentially taking out the curb behind this middle portion of parking rows and expanding, adding another two rows behind that. And underneath the new parking lot expansion will be another subsurface stormwater facility, a basin, similar to the existing one that's there today, but much larger. And it just has, it's more, it's compliant with, with current regulations from, from DEP and your stormwater management ordinance. So in a nutshell, without getting into the weeds on the engineering details, what I can tell you is, you know, the area of study, which again is, is limited to the earth disturbance associated with the two building additions, as well as the parking lot and the storm sewer improvements. It's, so that's represented on, on the plan. It's basically, you know, the back parking lot area, and I'm just sort of tracing it here. I don't know if I need to do anything for stenographer, I don't think so. But if you follow my hand around the plan, it, it sort of winds up here. The only reason why we go up this far is just for temporary construction staging. We're not actually going to be ruining the playfields up, up in this area. That's just temporary access. And then as we come down here, you know, you could see the limit of our work as you wrap around on the, on the south-westerly side into this driveway. And consistent with the zoning plan you might have seen, we are modifying this intersection slightly here to, to promote a more natural, you know, four-way configuration alignment, so it's more logical to, to average drivers. And also, we're, you know, we're taking out a little bit of blacktop there in between the existing driveway in front of the, the music wing addition to make room for some green space, some sidewalk, a pedestrian entry into the new school addition. So that's, that was the context of, of the project in a nutshell, from a civil engineering standpoint and a land design standpoint. And the, the existing infrastructure, as I mentioned, that the existing stormwater basin here will remain, and, and its outlet piping will remain in place. We are upgrading it around the new three-story addition. And we're, as I mentioned, we're installing a brand-new basin. We call them BMPs in engineering vernacular, but it's an underground basin. This is of the, it's a, like a storm crate. We call it, say, a modular unit. They look like milk crates, some people say. But it's a reinforced, it's a, it's a plastic composite material, but it is traffic loading, loaded rating for, for a fire engine. You could drive over it as long as, they built it per this spec with the appropriate cover and backfill and so forth. And I won't go into the weeds with all the details, but essentially, the drainage area, the overall drainage area that comes to the point of study, which is, which is right here, this big circle right there, the water that comes down there, it's 72% of that area is over and above what we need to do for, for the work here. So we're getting an additional 72% of the upstream area, which is currently, again, being intercepted by the storm drains going around the school and contributing to issues downstream. So we've oversized this, this basin to accommodate for that additional volume. And pre-design, we, we had mobilized our geotechnical division to, to go out there and test for infiltration, to see how fast water can infiltrate into the ground. And we got some favorable results. We planned it, so we tried to get, what was it, Tom, I think we did three, three test pits out there? Four, actually. This one back here off to the northernmost corner wasn't, wasn't quite as good. But we got some, some good rates here, right where we've got the basin. We've designed the basin to optimize those rates as well as intercept some of the plumbing upstream from the playfields that currently, again, just goes, and quote-unquote, "shotguns" down to the storm sewer. That's being intercepted by our new basin and managed. And how much of it, Tom, are we infiltrating into the ground? Like a percentage of, of the, of all I'm getting to the basin? All right, so 50%? Yeah. Which is being infiltrated back into the ground, which currently, again, is just going downstream. So that's the stormwater plan in a nutshell. We have some details to work out with your engineer. I spoke, I spoke with him this afternoon about his review comments. There wasn't anything in there that we can't work through. I'll just flip through real quick here a couple of snapshots of the details. This, this here is a, basically a pavement restoration plan. And in our sequence of construction, we try to anticipate problems such as, you know, not tying up this intersection down here for the general public, trying to maintain traffic flow through there. We are adding some angular parking here as part of that reconfiguration. We are creating a more formalized pedestrian entry, whereas right now, it's, it's a little bit haphazard. So to get to the new expanded parking lot, there, there's kind of a main channel for which people can go down and find the front doors. So the, the limit of work is somewhat detailed on this in a sort of bird's-eye view, everything in one there. And- Yes, sir. Yeah, let's get up to speed. So if you go to the next slide, Ryan, actually the drainage area slide, the one I have up might be out of order. Just want to go to this to speak to the, keep going, it might be at the end. We're skipping ahead here with our order. But this, the pink hatch here you see on, on the plan here is the, is the additional off-site area. That's, that's, that was it, sorry, almost, Ryan. One back. Yeah. Thanks. So the areas you see in, in pink, you see it better on the screen actually than on this board. But you can see, you know, we've designed this plan so we can intercept the overland flow there, and we have a engineered swale in there, much more, you know, robust, I should, I should say, than, than the existing ditch that is currently there behind the parking lot. And we have a bunch of inlets in here which direct the flow right into the basin. And then we've also added additional inlets here. You may or may not be aware, currently in the existing condition, there is a double inlet out the back which, I guess, was helping to try to alleviate issues previously. What we've done here is added an additional four inlets uphill of that to help intercept what's left that we can't physically get into the new basin to prevent the, the problems from the past from reoccurring.
Excuse me, what are the dashes for, the, like the chalk marks?
These chalk, chalk marks? That, that is the, the limit of disturbance, which I attempted to trace earlier. So that's basically the limit of work associated with the project.
Is that about where we would expect to see the construction fence?
Exactly correct, yes.
Yeah, we have a logistics plant.
And there's parking going in there as well?
Yes, there will be.
In right field?
Yes, yeah, there, there will be parking in here. We were trying to show the, you know, the, the before and after of one, one plan here. But yes, the parking lot is, is this area right, right in here. That's correct. Let me go back to the computer. All right, so this slide here, if you can see it. That, that's perfect, I got it right, thank you. So this kind of, this shows you, you know, some detail. You can't really read too much there, but again, here's like a zoomed-in picture- But again, here's like a zoomed-in picture of how we're improving the area right behind the music wing addition. Then as you go left to right, looking at the plan in front of you on the board, this is the, the main parking lot expansion. And you can see the sort of checkered markings and light gray at the top of the screen. That's the new underground basin. But you can't see quite as well is there's, there's a series of utility lines on the screen that kind of run diagonally through the existing parking. So that limited how much more we could expand it. We squeezed every drop we could into that new expanded parking lot area. We couldn't go any further because of those conflicts. Otherwise, it would have been a big rectangle. That's why the unusual shape. And then as you move from plan left to plan right, this is behind the three-story addition. I don't know what your level of detail is. I could speak all night on it, but I don't want to bore you into tears. The bottom line you see coming out, if you look at this, this image here, sort of dead center at the bottom of the page, a dash line that goes up. Yeah, exactly right. That's the existing roof leader. A little bit more, sorry, has it banged my elbow? Yeah, that, that's the existing roof leader coming off of the existing school building. So we're intercepting that. We're putting a yard drain in the middle of it. And then we are picking up the existing loading dock drainage. There comes, there's a trench drain that comes out. And there will be a pipe that goes under the, the new addition. That wasn't ideal. We were looking to avoid that. But unfortunately, just the way the existing plumbing works with the storm pipes that are out there, we're limited by how much vertical fall we have from the upstream end, where it comes out of the building, to the downstream end. And therefore, you know, we just don't have enough of that fall to run the pipes all the way out and around the new addition. So we do have to, we do have to send a pipe underneath the new addition. And, you know, we will have to design the footers for the, for the substructure of the, of that addition to accommodate that, make sure there's no loads being introduced to the pipe. And we'll work with, with the engineer on, on the best material for that and how that detailing gets coordinated. So that's, you know, this plan right here shows you kind of how, you know, you know, looking at the plumbing, the new, the dark dash lines that come across the top of the page, that's diverting, you know, the existing flow out and around. Whereas currently, that comes in and gets wired in, if you will, with the roof leader before going around. So we're, we're splitting that up to help prevent backwater issues, things of that nature, that, that might be currently hindering the system as it is today. So we're trying to improve what's there as well as intercept more runoff than, than what it currently does today. And this is just an overall landscaping plan. We do show some street trees. There's a lot of utilities in this parking lot, a lot of, a lot of different conduits and water services and such. But we did try to address our safety concern for, for children playing, students playing in the athletic fields, having a tripping hazard with, with that engineered swale there with inlets in it. So rather than putting a fence in that somebody could, could run into chasing down an errant ball, we opted instead for a hedgerow, you know, a green alternative that may get a scratch, but they won't necessarily, you know, bang themselves up as much, so. This is the lighting plan, so there's existing fixtures out there today. So those will be replaced. And, you know, we put together this plan to demonstrate compliance with your ordinance in terms of light coverage and, and safety, in terms of not having dark spots in the parking lot.
What's the height of the fixture? Is it 20 feet?
Good question. I'll have to look at.
The highest fixture?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think so.
In that schedule of height.
Yeah.
In this, in the schedule to the top left, the highest listed.
Okay.
Fixure is 20 feet.
Thanks, Ryan. And here's just some details, kind of showing you what that new stormwater basin, basin is made of. The modular system in the upper-right corner of the screen, it kind of gives a good picture. And then the lower-left corner gives you a sandwich profile, you know, cuts, we call them profiles, a section view. If you were to cut it in half, that's, that's kind of what it would look like if you cut the parking lot in half. So this I included just because it shows you the existing basin I spoke of earlier and some improvements your engineer had, had asked us to, to install some, some manhole access, some portals, so we can get in there and maintain it and flush out any debris that's in there. As part of the, the pre-construction work, as I spoke with Chuck today, you know, we're going to see if we can't get a televised video line in there to assess what kind of condition those pipes are in. They're all corrugated metal pipes. They could be, you know, in need of replacement or repair. So this way, we'll have a better idea before it goes to construction, you know, if there's issues, what they are, where they are, et cetera. So this was a detail, and we have some notes on there to, to address, you know, the what-if scenarios that we can anticipate at this point in time. After we do the video televising of, of the infrastructure that's currently there, we'll have a better idea to inform that, that specification.
That existing basin, it appears as though you're adding drainage area to that basin?
We are modifying drainage area to that basin. We're taking out the existing parking lot and replacing it with building. So we're doing a sort of impervious swap. You can see the existing parking lot there. Right, you know, that's, that's going to be the music wing now. And we're removing a sliver, basically a row of parking to accommodate that green space I mentioned earlier. But the building that's going in its place is, does have a green roof. So for your two-year volume, your DEP required, volume reduction controls, that's being provided by the green roof for the building addition. And overflow will then be discharged into that basin, you're correct, just like it does today. But it's on parking lot right now.
Okay, and that basin does not function as a seepage bed, correct?
Well, it may, or maybe it used to. But we did not assume that it does in our calculations. We assumed it does not, that it's, that it's sealed and it is basically a, what we call an extended detention facility. It's basically underground bathtub.
Okay, so you don't, you don't intend to do any type of infiltration testings in that general area to see whether or not you could get some type of recharge on that basin?
I think, yeah, the logistics of trying to, you know, you know, we could possibly test around it or possibly inside of it in between pipes somewhere. The issue is, you know, when you dig a hole that's five feet deep or so and it has stone bedding all around it, then, you know, that, you can't, it's not like digging through dirt where you can just, you know, dig out a hole in the wall stay. You know, the, the stone side fill will, will cave in on it. So your, your five-foot-deep hole will expand out into a 20-foot hole. And even if we got that, when we dealt with that, the issue is, is then, you know, if it is clogged, then what do you do to fix it? You got to rip the whole thing out? And then, you know, the under, the under, the, the subsoils could, could be compromised. It may not be capable of infiltration. So we designed around that. We took credit for, for the rate controls it provides, but the, the infiltration is in the new basin.
Yeah, you could use a drill rig to do, and do falling head tests to determine the infiltration rates without disturbing too much of the property. If you wanted to take into account some degree of recharge there.
Okay.
It's an idea.
Here are the engineered section views. Again, I don't wish to bore anyone to tears with them. But this kind of paints the picture of what we're dealing with in terms of the parking lot slope as you go from plan left to plan right. You have a little bit of gray drop, as, you know, as the parking lot does today.
How deep is that, deepest cut on that section?
How deep is the deepest section? I, let's see. What scale are we talking about? Let me see, 7 feet deep? I thought the deepest part of the basin was like seven. Yeah, I feel like, yeah, I feel like you're right. Hold on.
Seven foot.
Seven foot or so. Hold on one second. That's correct. Seven feet from finished grade, where the new paving will be, to the bottom of the bed. At the worst case. And those systems, I believe you can go up to 12, 12 feet maximum? Yeah. So we're nowhere near the, the integrity point that.
I'm not, not concerned about the integrity of the system. I was more concerned about the utilities than that area.
Right.
Getting pretty close to.
Yeah.
Maybe undercutting them.
Yeah, we, we did have quite a number of, like, two or three mobilizations with the utility locator. We did a couple soft digs.
You did?
Yes, we did.
Is that electric line shallow back there?
Yeah, they, they were, you know, we opened the manhole, yeah, three or four feet. I mean, we're completely avoiding, you know, the main artery of utilities there. But, but yeah, where our, where our bed is, you know, they scan that area closely. And, you know, one thing we couldn't find was that the existing stormpipe, believe it or not, coming from the playfields, there's a manhole that's buried there. So we placed an inlet based on, you know, the, the record drawings of where it should be. And hopefully, it's, it's close. We'll find out when we dig. But we try to anticipate that anomaly. But otherwise, we try to, we try to map out all the utilities as best we could. And we did a couple soft digs to confirm some things, including the roof leader where it comes out of the building.
Did you do a soft dig over the electric line?
We were able to access that through, there was a manhole. We could open up the manhole. And they, they did, they traced it with GPR, and it was pretty uniform.
Okay.
You know, so we didn't see any, anything really out of whack there to, to warrant another one.
During construction, we'll check, soft dig and test for it and find it again located. Run through, would you like just to quickly run through the logistics plan?
Sure.
That we're anticipating?
If your engineer's done.
Unless there's any more questions for the engineer?
We'll probably have questions, but why don't you finish your presentation?
All right.
Well, you know what, you can go back. So here in this plan, you can see kind of the dark, the dark line that wraps around that, it has LOD is the little letters that go in it, if everybody can see that. It kind of wraps around the building. So the thought process is trying to really limit our disturbance. Right now, as I mentioned, we have not solidified with the district exactly what our phasing is. But the thinking, just logically, is that most likely the classroom wing would be constructed along with the parking lot addition, just because of proximity. The roof drains go into the underground basin. So logistically, the idea would be, for phase one, we call it, would be currently. So currently, the idea would be in 2021, the parking lot expansion, there would be a construction fence along the limit of disturbance around. We would have a construction entrance on one side, a construction entrance on the other side at the far east side of the high school, coming through the east park, existing east, east parking lot. This would all be lay down behind the school to build the new building, build the underground basin. We would not, we would be completely out of the school operation throughout the school year. And then in the summer, we would complete this middle section of parking lot where it ties into the new parking lot. We would always maintain access to the loading dock for fire access, deliveries, et cetera. So that would be completed over the summer along with the addition. Fast forward, year two would be, the idea would be during the school year, we could build the addition proper, take a small area of the parking lot to just build the addition. But at that point, the new parking lot expansion will be there. And then again, in similar fashion, over the summer, there is some, you know, slight grading, the, the little revision of this intersection over at Leadum, and finish this parking lot over the summer along with additions inside the building. So that's our general thought process right now. Again, we need to review it along with our cash flow to confirm that works. But that's our goal right now. So we really are trying to 100% separate ourselves, construction from the school and school operations.
Significant parking loss during construction, though, right?
No.
Oh.
There was zero parking lot loss during construction. So.
There's that phase one.
Yeah, let's do, let's show them that. So that's why I said, so during phase one, we're going to be outside of the existing parking lot. You know, let's go to the, let's go to this plan right here. So right now, so basically, we'll, we'll do, we'll have a construction entrance over here in this corner. And then we'll take all this green space, basically, right behind the existing high school. And we'll have a construction fence that will be along the existing parking lot. So we'll say separate of that. Then in the summer, then we have to creep in here, do a little bit of regrading and tie the two, the new parking lot together. There is a little bit of a grade change. If you notice on the drawings, basically, the line of these existing 20 or so spots, there is a 12-inch or so difference where we have to put a larger curb. And then we'll put a wooden jersey barrier, you see them at Wawa's and whatnot, at retaining walls. It will be a roughly three-foot-tall wall, so nobody can just step and fall over a one-foot space.
Without, without knowing the details, was there any consideration to combining the construction of both of the additions at the same time for cost effectiveness?
That, that is, was a thought. Again, with cash flow constraints and borrowing constraints, it may not be likely. So that's, that's what we have to sit down and finalize.
Okay.
Certainly, it was something to consider. But for right now, the intent is to do it over those two phases, over the two-year period.
So phase one, you said 2021, assume phase two is 2022?
So phase two, so, yes, thank you for asking that. So it would basically be January or so, 2021. Start building the addition, do work on the underground basin through the spring. School ends in June. Do the parking lot tie-in. Building is complete and opens for school of fall 2021. Fast forward, again, start in, in the winter, February, January, February, on the new music addition. Get that done, then summer 2022. Do the interior renovations, do the parking lot, slight regrading, repaving. And again, then the music wing would be open for September 2022.
You're putting parking into Wright Field?
So it's really, it's, it's nowhere near Wright Field. I think we have a dimension on there. I think the new parking lot is 370-ish feet from home plate. And the athletic director, well, maybe if, if the, these days.
That's quite a shot for a high school.
With the juiced-up bats, I don't know what kids are doing. But if they are, they're going to the major leagues, and then they can give the money back to the high school. But it, after speaking, I know they want it to be about 280 feet to Wright Field, so there's more than enough barrier. That was one of, actually, one of the discussions early on in the planning was to put the parking lot here in this big square area. And after review internally and further discussions, this would get so close to kind of foul balls. And this ended up being less intrusive to all the athletics and just the size of the practice fields and whatnot. So this area where it's shown currently just makes a lot more sense for the district, for the athletic fields. And even just for the flow of the parking is just a lot more efficient.
The lay-down area that you have, that's going to accommodate construction trailers?
Yeah, we're going to have to, we're going to have to limit it, you know. We'll have some storage trailers there. It, it should be a decent enough size, certainly. And, you know, we have to stay off of, the reason why we needed to take a little bit more on this kind of northeast half is we have to stay off the underground retention base. We can't run construction traffic over an infiltration bed. So we created a road so that, you know, trucks, there's no way they could ever turn around in here. So they have to have a way in and out. That was part of that thought process. Logistically, we're actually probably going to slide these topsoil piles over, out of the way because it kind of takes up some of the field for the spring athletics. But this should be plenty of area.
And how about contractor parking?
So we'll try and have some of them in here. So we'll try and have some of them in here as well. So that they'll be parked along the road. It is, that will be tight, but we're going to have to deal with it in the contractors. We write that into their contracts, that they have to do that. And even, you know, at Linwood, they all triple park themselves in because they're all coming in at the same time. They're leaving at the same time. So there's ways that we work around that. And we probably, you know, this is the details that we haven't quite gotten into just yet. We may have to limit to only, you know, one or two storage trailers and deal with it. You know, we're working on a project in Center City right now where there's zero site logistics and they, they make it work. So this, this is somewhat of a luxury and they'll, they're used to it. So we'll be able to work through that.
Will, will the interior renovations be coordinated with the phasing?
Yes. So essentially, for the classroom wing, for example, the building, the addition itself can be built without breaking through the wall, literally, so to speak. And then we'll have to cut, cut in and there's a new, a new layout in this one existing classroom on all three floors. That's where the bathrooms Brian spoke of, Ryan spoke of, need to be installed. So there's a little bit there. We have to tie into the existing hot water loop, the chill water loop, those type of things. So that would be over the summer for the classroom wing. And then in the music wing, in the same fashion, the interior spacing here, it's really not a large space. So that would be done over the summer as well.
Minimal interior renovations?
Yeah.
To patch the new additions?
Well, no, the, for the classroom wing, I would say more so fairly minimal. The music wing, there is, I would say, a little bit heavier touch renovation on the inside. It does have some reconfiguration to create the new chorus room and enlarge the existing fitness center.
Okay. I'm just thinking in terms of the impact of how much you can do over the summer.
Oh, yes, trust me, that's, and that's part of phasing too, you know, not biting off more than we can chew, so to speak. So, but it is, over that summer period, it is doable. It's, you know, we have roughly 11 weeks to do it. It's not, it's not a heavy finished area. It's not a whole lot of walls.
Yeah, the largest two areas, as Ken was speaking about, are directly adjacent to that music wing addition. And it's a fitness room, which isn't heavy finishes, and then a chorus room, which they can very easily finish in a, in a summer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, and I know your elevations, I know the problems that we've had once upon a time in the past with elevations not being where they were meant to be. I'm assuming that you will take extra, extra precautions?
Before we break through the wall, the floors will be at the same elevation.
Thank you very much.
We've taken that into consideration.
Hey, anything else you want to say?
Uh, no, no. So certainly, you know, the floor is yours for any questions you have for us.
I assume you received a copy of the Township Engineers Review Letter?
Yes, we have.
Is there anything in there you'd like to discuss with us?
Ron, you can speak to that. I mean, I didn't, didn't.
Yeah. I guess. Really only, it was item. Item number nine, related to a waiver request, essentially for, we had submitted a waiver request for a stormwater peak rate reduction, specific and limited to only one small area of the site. And that is the drainage coming down Lead, Leadham Avenue. And in speaking with Chuck this afternoon, we agreed that, you know, it's, it's best to withdraw that waiver request. And we'll work together on a solution to that since it was a pretty minimal exceedance, if you will. The requirement, just to be clear, was that the, the two-year post-development peak rate of runoff, getting to that point, per the ordinance, needs to be reduced to below the one-year pre-development. We are reducing it from, from the after to less than the before. But because of the limited work we have in that area and because of the fact that our work is isolated to this intersection and a few parking stalls, we just don't have enough disturbance to, you know, to control and to reduce the peak flow quite to that level as the plan currently sits. So there's other solutions that we could work toward and that's what we'd like to do. So we'd like to withdraw that waiver request. Aside from that, I have nothing in here to talk about. I mean, just items we would discuss, number 18, for instance, the comment about the, the substandard curb and sidewalk along Mill Road should be considered, along with upgrading ADA facilities, the handicap ramps. That's something I understand the school district is, is willing to consider discussion on. But we can't say we'll comply at this time. It's something, something we have to look into, correct? We have to review.
Okay. Anyone on the board have any questions? Chuck?
Well, I just, I'm assuming in regards to number 18, the work that you are doing along Mill Road, the new stuff that comes in that you're doing will comply with what's going on, or it won't?
We don't, yeah, our limited work is isolated to essentially the rear of the school. We don't have any disturbance on the plan associated with the front. We're trying to limit our disturbance, limit costs and so forth, but.
But I assumed, I just wanted clarification, I'm sorry. Thank you. That's all.
David? Jesse?
Yeah, about the green roofs. So it was a, if I understand, reading the zoning, it was a contingency to do 50% green roof? Is there any consideration to go beyond that? It looks like you're doing exactly 50%. Was there any consideration to do at all besides cost?
So really, at this time, 50% is really the maximum that we can afford to give based on other roof spaces. We're doing rooftop mechanical equipment, so we can't put that over top of a green roof. So we need those other areas that aren't green roof to actually allow the building to function.
Roof top units up there and?
Yes, yes.
And is it, is it a tray system or is it an extensive system or?
Currently, it's a plan for a tray system, modular tray system.
Or like a TPO or something?
Currently EPDM, but yes, yeah.
Does the school district have any experience with green roofs? Any other buildings have green roofs?
Nope. Not, not currently.
Yes.
Not a question, more of a statement, just so everybody is aware. I looked real quick and it looks like all the new exterior lighting is scheduled to be LED. And you're planning to follow through with that, so?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I, there was only one question that I had as I went through the plans. And we didn't look at the turning schematics at all. But it looked like we were going to be wrecking some curbs with buses and fire engines.
Yes, that's a good point. That's a, that's a good point. And to that end, I mean, it doesn't show up on the turning templates from the construction drawings or specifically on the grading detail sheets. We call for depressed curb, flush curbing to allow for, for those wheels to go basically right up on the curb without, you know, blowing out a tire or, you know, and.
Regular.
Yeah. I mean, for the larger vehicles. We do show the bus, the bus maneuvering as it does today to the current parking lot. And we did provide overly wide radius here, you know, for larger wheel-based vehicles to get out easier. So that was a consideration in the layout as well.
Have you considered all of the use cases of trucks getting to that loading dock?
Yes.
Fire engines and school buses might not necessarily be the largest trucks going through there.
That's correct. But we're not altering the geometry. If anything, we're improving that, the existing turning, you know, whatever, whatever the school currently has. And maybe Ken can elaborate. But, you know, we, by, by introducing this intersection here, we're, we're helping to provide at least a larger, you know, three-point turn area if somebody, you know, needs it.
Yeah, if you can see now, all that's there for all their deliveries is a little teeny turnaround that's there. So now, actually, that's going to be able to almost pull further in with the expansion of the parking lot. So it does improve that. The other nice benefit, I failed to mention with pointing this out, is the nice part, you know, a fire truck can get right up to, we haven't reviewed it yet with Steve Poole from the township, but we'll be doing that soon. But it can get right up next to the addition. The loading dock is maybe eight or 10 feet away from that edge. So then they can get their ladder truck right up to the roof.
Actually, Steve Poole, the fire official, and Chief John Viola, who is fire chief and police chief, but mainly fire chief of, I want to say that, is that Oakmont? Somebody correct me, I'm going to yell that. First line, thank you. Did review the plan and did not see any issues. They said it, you know, that the turning radius and everything else is fine.
Oh, great.
They're concerned, okay?
Great, thank you, Kelly. Anything else, Nick?
Thank you.
Maggie?
Yes, I just had a couple of questions about the proposed landscaping in your parking area. It looks like you're going to be adding a few flowering shrubs and canopy trees. So there's a honey locust and then service berry in some of the new planting islands, but not in others. I'm wondering if you could explain why. So towards the three-story addition, that larger planting island in the parking expansion and then the smaller planting island aren't going to be getting landscaping in them?
Let me flip to it, give me one moment. Yeah, we have a plethora of existing utilities. Yeah, that's the short answer.
That's what it looked like. It looked like there was a manhole and lines running under it, so, okay. And then the comment about the evergreen hedge that you're proposing, you're clustering all of your greens together, so all the same species, five in a row, five in a row, five in a row, five in a row. My recommendation would just be to mix them up to create a little bit more of a visual interest. And I know that Engineers Review Letter also recommended that the shade tree commission should look at this. So I don't know if you received any feedback from them on that.
No, we still need to set up a meeting to go through that with them.
Okay, great. Yeah, just for a visual interest, just to kind of spread them out. Plus, if one of them gets a blight, then you have a whole kind of missing tooth right there. So.
Sure, absolutely.
Maybe spread them out a little bit to kind of create visual interest and intersperse the species more so than aligning them all in a row.
Okay, yeah, we'll take a look at that.
I had a similar question about trees. I had a similar question about trees and what space you had included in your plan for new plantings. I understand you'll be going through that with the tree commission, but I just wondered in the existing plan if you could explain that.
Well, we, again, you know, we're trying to limit the work to minimize disturbance. And it's difficult to comply with ordinance criteria that are, that are geared to more of a land development where you're sort of starting from scratch. So, so, you know, we made an attempt to try to quantify what we thought would, would be applicable to the project. And once, once we meet with the shade tree commission and, and vet, you know, what they, you know, see what they would like, what changes.
Well, and remember too, I, we are not taking any trees out, right? No, there's not a single.
Well, there's a couple that, yeah, there's one.
In the parking lot over here?
In the parking lot, correct.
Out back, there's nothing, so in that parking lot, okay. So we would have to meet that criteria.
And we're replacing those. And we're trying to, you know, meet the replacement criteria. But, you know, outside of that, it's really kind of, it's not so cut and dry in terms of the ordinance, what would be required for an application like this. So we need to meet with the shade tree and, and, you know, see what, what they're going to require.
I have a number of general questions. It was discussed that the roof is going to be a green roof. And I understand that the school district has not had, had any experience with that. What would be some of the maintenance issues with specking a green roof?
With specifying or future maintenance?
I'm sorry. What would be the future maintenance of a green roof?
So it would vary on the type of, of system. But that's actually the advantage to a modular tray system. Say one area, area died out, you'd essentially replace that single tray instead of having to replant an area such as that. There's, there's, it's not annual trimming, but as, as needed trimming. And also the cedum roofs, you can cut pieces off of and reseed them around.
So I'm assuming that this would have to be done by the facilities?
It would be, yes, it would be a response.
The other issue I had was, when we first came in here, there was a rendering of the addition. I saw a number of materials that were being used.
Sure.
Can you describe what your intentions are for the exterior?
So we'll start with the classroom wing. So the classroom wing would begin to mimic the existing high school academic wing, which is predominantly brick with strip windows. And then above those strip windows, there actually used to be glass block, I believe, which in the 1996 renovation was infilled with ephes. So we're not mimicking that, but playing off of that motif with metal panels or metal siding.
Complementing what's there?
Yes, yeah. And then on the end, because those are specialty labs, kind of calling those out separately in a decorative concrete masonry unit, which would also play off of the light ephes color of the other portions of the existing school.
And the room that's at the very bottom of the, of the structure?
Yes.
What's the dimension as far as from grade to the sill?
From currently, right now, that rendering is showing three, three feet?
I'm just concerned about security, that's all.
Okay.
Especially in that corner. And the last question I have is probably to the superintendent. Right now, the student population is, you said 1,900? And the projected capacity is with the addition?
Twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-three hundred?
Projected capacity, yes.
Thank you.
Again.
The study was through. Well, they're looking for that. I just wanted to touch on the, the maintenance concern for the green roof because that's come up a couple of times. I've heard that same question on, when we were doing the Radnor Middle School, they had the same concerns. And believe me, there was a learning curve. We, on that project, we had a rain garden outside the front door, not too far from it. And, you know, they went in and they mowed that, they brush hogged that out like it was a, you know, a dry pond from the 70s. And I said, no, no, no. You know, so we, you know, there was an education involved. And we've been trying to tailor our, our what we call maintenance and operations guidelines. We have a series of notes. Those got formalized into an agreement, which binds the school district owner to, to those maintenance obligations. And so we try to sit down with whoever the, the maintenance lead people are and, you know, walk them through it, talk, you know, show them the details and the specs and how often they, they need to water things during a drought or replace material instead and that sort of thing. So, so we're learning as we go along too. But, you know, I feel, I feel like that's less of an issue than, than what it used to be, certainly 10 years ago.
And your building plans include provisions to access those roof areas, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. You're not going to see somebody on a ladder trying to climb up three stories?
No, no, there's, there's already existing means to get onto each of the adjacent roofs. So those means would be utilized. Just to answer the question about the year that the study went through, it was initiated in 2017. So a 10-year study was then through 2027.
And it's all classrooms? And you said that there's labs also?
Yes, so regular-sized classrooms where English would be taught. And then there are some specialty labs for physics, applied engineering, STEM, STEM classes.
are some specialty labs for physics, applied engineering, STEM, STEM classes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
David, did you get your question? Okay. Two things. Comment number seven regarding open space. I know at Linwood, you identified an area on the site that would be compliant with the open space requirements. I assume you'll be doing that here also?
That's correct. We have 47% open space right now. We will delineate that and label it and show it on the plan.
Okay. You don't need to do 47%, you only need to do 30%. And the reason I caution you is that once you designate as open space, you can't go putting an addition there, okay? And then in regards to the curb cuts, the handicap curb cuts along Mill Road, at the intersection, the school's driveway intersection with Austin Road, there is a crosswalk there. And on the township side of Mill Road, there is a depressed curb, there's a crosswalk, and once you get to the school property, there's a full-height curb. And similar, similar situation occurred at Linwood, and the school district agreed to make that, put a depressed curb in there so that someone can make that crossing without having to step over the curb.
Okay. At Austin Road, you're pointing? Austin Road?
Yeah, Austin in the front driveway, the exit part of the...
Correct.
Okay, well, we're not going to take any action in your plan tonight. Obviously, you have a lot of work to do in, in regards to addressing the comments. I will advise you that we've been tasked with the responsibility of making sure that we don't release plans to the Board of Commissioners until basically we have a quote-unquote clean letter from the Township Engineer. So I would suggest you go to work, address these comments to the best of your ability. I know there's some things that'll, that'll come in the future, and we can live with those, but we have to get the comments down to something more manageable. And also, I had some technical comments that I'd like to share with you. I don't want to border, border my technical comments, so if you could stick around for a few minutes when we're done here, I'd be glad to go over those with you.
Certainly.
Anybody else have anything?
Just one thing. With the shade tree being two of the items on the list that we can probably pretty easily knock off, would you be prepared for the February 25th meeting, or would you prefer March? It's the fourth Monday of each month.
For the planning commission?
For the shade tree.
For shade tree, February 25th. I don't see why not, right?
You can have...
We probably need to just speak with our team just to be sure we can have the time to, to do it. I mean, why don't we talk about that? No, no, that's okay. It's just making sure we can get the documentation, then Pinoni has to review it to make sure we get a clean letter, so it's probably not two weeks from now.
Everyone's to meet with the shade tree and then agree...
Yeah, most likely it would be a month from now.
That's what I was saying. I just wanted to double check. I have some very small things that I want to make sure that I can schedule around, so I had a meeting for this no matter what.
So that meeting would be March 12 likely?
Yes, I think realistically, that's a target we can hit.
Okay. Well, unless you have anything else, I'm sorry, is there anyone in the audience would like to say something? We have a captive audience here, okay. No one objecting to this plan, I assume? Okay. Well, thanks for coming in, guys. Good luck moving forward, and we'll see you in a month or so.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I think all we have left to do tonight is to adjourn.
To adjourn?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.